And we are ready when you are.
We're ready. Thank you for coming this evening, December 6th, 2021, City Council. Please stand and join me for the pledge of allegiance. I pledge allegiance to the flag of the United States of America and to the republic for which it stands, one nation, under God, indivisible, with liberty and justice for all. Roll call, please.
Councilmember Ballinger?
Here.
Councilmember Kramik?
Here.
Councilmember Swift?
Here.
Mayor Pro Tim Leggero?
Here.
And Merrill?
Here.
We have the consent calendar. These items are considered routine in nature and act upon a single action unless requested by an individual council member or member of the public for special consideration. Is there anyone who would like to remove anything off this agenda for the consent calendar in the audience online at the council? No one. So since no one spoke up, I'll accept the motion.
Mayor Alz, I move that we approve this consent calendar in its entirety.
Very good.
I'll second that.
We have a motion and a second. All those in favor?
Aye.
Motion carries five zero. Very good. All right. That moves us down here to staff communication.
Thank you, Mayor. I did check with staff if they have any items and they don't, so I'm just going to move on to mine. The first item I have is I need a consensus from council on an alley abandonment. If you could please pull up that picture down here. I'm going to pull it up for you right now so you have a picture. Okay, so over on McHenry Avenue between Roosevelt and First, we have a potential project moving forward. I'm going to take ownership over here. And this area, as you are aware, we've talked about it several times because it's been related kind of to the Prospect Street area at one time, is an actual alley owned by the city. The project that they want to move forward with wants to utilize that area as a shared driveway. And so we wanted to make sure with the council that you would be okay with the city or staff moving forward with the processing of this project of abandoning that portion of the 19-foot alley. But we do have sewer utilities in that alley, and so we would keep a public utilities easement in that area. However, they would not be able to put anything into the ground, so no buildings, no other items could go there. It would strictly be concrete.
Well, my question is, does it still go out to that street?
It would go out to that street. And so ideally, what we're thinking is as this area develops, because they own this south portion as well as the north portion, they want to utilize it as a driveway. And so ideally, as things move forward in these other areas develop, they would also...
That driveway goes out to McHenry?
The driveway goes out to McHenry, yes.
Goes into McHenry. Is there enough clearance between that driveway and the intersection?
Yes.
We've already done the due diligence?
We have done the due diligence, and so our engineer is also advising that he thinks that that would be the safest way to create this as a shared alley. And as people construct, like these other lots next door are not developed...
The exit, would it only be one direction or both?
I believe it's going to be right turn of...
It's just the one. Ideally, we do not want them going through that alleyway. Hopefully, there's some kind of barrier, like in a road barricade type thing that we would put at the end of the property line, which...
Right by the highway?
Right there, basically where the number one is, is where we'd put that barricade, which means it wouldn't be a drive-through alley, so people wouldn't be driving through center streets.
So it's more or less just off McHenry onto the property?
Exactly.
So the land beyond the barricade, what becomes of that?
Still an alley that we would access, and it would just be next to the residential street.
But you couldn't go beyond that point because of the barricade?
That's yes.
So it's a dead alley?
Correct.
And we're only abandoning it a portion at a time, so it would only be for this area because that's what's under, that would be what's under development. And then if these other parcels decide to develop, if they also want to utilize that area as their shared driveway, which it would have to be shared because it would still be a public utility easement, then we would do the same for them.
What other access to the property other than that one location would be there? Would there be an access point off of Roosevelt then? As well, or is that the only in and out of that whole property area there up on development?
There is not going to be one off of Roosevelt that I'm aware of for this project. They wanted it off McHenry, and most projects do want their exits off the main driveway.
Well, then I'll tell you what makes all those lots a lot more valuable that way, too. You have a lot more usable land. It makes a lot more sense.
And just to be clear, I'm sorry, I'm mayor and council. This is just all potential. This will be going through the planning commission and planning department, and we'll be coming back, so...
So this is just proposed?
This...
It's just to gain a consensus from council that it's okay to do so because this alley has come up and passed discussions with a lot of other things that we're doing.
Do we have a consensus? Anyone opposing it?
I have a question. What is the benefit of abandoning it a section at a time rather than just getting a public use easement on the whole thing at one time?
Well, essentially, we already have the easement, so if we were to block it off, it would just be one section of the alley being pavement or concrete, another just being dirt unless we want to do something to it.
Does it benefit the properties around it if we get rid of the alleyway?
Personally, I don't think it benefits it. I think it would, I mean, maybe it would benefit. I mean, honestly, as long as we would enclose it, I don't think we would want to abandon the alley and leave it open. I mean, we'd want to move property lines and things like that to add to it because we, and we also wouldn't want to do that because we do have the sewer line in there, so I'm going to have to have access through there, so we can't build on top of it. So I'd like, as far as the city, to keep that portion of it if possible. We could repave or concrete to make it all uniform to look as one. As far as getting rid of it, I wouldn't advise it.
What's the point of blocking it off with a barricade?
So people aren't driving through next to residential, coming into a facility or into the property here to shop for business, coming out central, especially with the way the transmission and the powerhouse shop already is having issues with parking and things like that. I personally think if that could just be a drive where people coming in and out would cause more problems personally.
If I may, I guess I wasn't clear before. I'll be a little bit clearer from the city attorney's perspective here. We're having, this has gone past staff communication and into a discussion that wasn't even on anybody's radar, let alone on the agenda. I think what staff really is just asking is, in this area, there's been discussion of potential different things that might happen in this area. And I think staff just wanted to know if there's another project that the city council wants to see in that area, that now's the time to speak up so we don't spin our wheels or they don't spin their wheels on a project that the city council is actually looking to do something else with that land, not that it's our land.
Now that you explain it that way, it limits all those questions we asked.
Correct.
There you go.
But I will say, yeah, I have no problem with it based on how it's been described tonight. How's that?
There we go.
Based on what we've been described so far. I have no problem with it.
All right, so do we have a consensus already? Should we move forward now? All right, what's next?
Okay. So our next item, the city has been contacted regarding a potential, there's a magazine that goes around, it's called Site Selection Magazine, and what it does is advertises lands and cities for development. And I know that the council, a few different times now, has had the Liberty Business Park specific plan come up repeatedly. Ever since we adopted that plan, you know, we had the recession, we had some other issues come up, and we've never really advertised that area with that plan to see if there's any potential businesses or developers out there that would be interested in developing it. The main component with that area is its lack of infrastructure. And so I just wanted to advise the council that we are looking towards potentially putting an advertisement in this magazine on the Liberty Business Park area and basically trying to see what's out there, if there'd be anybody that would be interested in possibly developing that parcel or that area in the future in accordance with our specific plan.
How much do we get to pay for the ad?
The ad for the full page, it's a half-page advertisement and a half-page writing is $3,700.
And we're paying for that because why?
Well, back in 2007, I believe, or 2009, we adopted the Liberty Business Park specific plan, which essentially has come back to us a few different times from some of those property owners, that it confines them from being able to develop their property. Well, when that plan was created, it was essentially created to try to market somebody to build a business park in that area.
My question is, why aren't the owners of the property paying for the ad?
We have not been in contact with them. We can reach out to them if you'd like and see if they would be interested.
Will they share?
But since we had that specific plan and moved forward with that on the property, we thought it would be a good thing to do is to at least try to advertise it and see if we can get it some information. And going back in the files, it did seem in the past that even when there was, after that specific plan was adopted, because we've had to do some research over the last few months for one of the property owner's staff reports, that the biggest hiccup in trying to provide information was that we didn't have any information. We adopted this specific plan and then didn't do anything from there. And so when they were having developers contact them and ask questions, how much infrastructure would cost, what they would need to do to do things, we never finished after we adopted the plan. And so I think this would be a great opportunity to see what's out there and see if there's any interest in developing that area and hopes that it would bring that infrastructure to that area and develop it in accordance with the plan that we adopted.
I disagree, I just think the burden should be shared.
Yeah, no, I agree with that, too. I mean, you know, with what Mayor Alz said, I mean, if it sounds like it's going to be a joint venture, you know, wetted at the hip on this one, then they need to have a part and preferably have some skin in that cost as well.
Okay. It's a monthly meeting, the one that comes out in January is like the biggest one, it gets shared with over 100,000 different companies and stuff, but they do have a monthly meeting, and so I don't think it would hurt anything to put it in a later ad.
And then the thing is, you're going to explain in that article the cost of the infrastructure.
We don't have the estimates on that yet, but they would be advised that there is no infrastructure and basically advise at this point where it's located and how far away it is.
You might mention to them Jack Boring and so forth and so...
Yeah, no, no, no. And these people that are doing these types of projects that pay attention to this magazine are supposed to be experienced in that stuff, where they have a lot better of an idea of that stuff.
What I don't want to do is give someone the impression that it's no big deal, just roll over and start developing.
No, no, yeah, we wouldn't do that. And as we move forward, if we were getting that interest, then obviously it would push us towards moving forward on getting those things prepared for them, so we're able to answer those questions when they come in. Right now, nobody knows it exists, and so nobody calls.
I think it's a good idea to move forward on that because it's also going to just see what kind of interest there is in the viability of continuing with that specific plan out there.
Correct.
2007 and 2021 are vastly different in what the commercial space looks like out there now. So if there's no interest, that'll give you a good direction on what you should do with that property out there.
Correct. And it just seems like with the way everything turned out that it never actually got its fair chance to see if it could survive.
Test drive it and see what's out there.
Yeah. So is that, I'm going to go ahead and, do you want me to move forward with contacting property owners and see if they're interested first?
Absolutely. Do you need a consensus?
Sure.
Gentlemen, any objections?
Yep, yep.
No objections here?
Okay, we'll go ahead and do that.
But I think you should share that cost with the owners of the properties.
All right, sounds good.
We're partners, let's split it down the middle. All right.
So then the last item I have is for future meetings. The last few years, we have what we called gone dark on our second meeting in December because it's the weekend of the holiday.
Right.
If you want me to move forward with that, unless there's something extremely pressing, we would go ahead and cancel that meeting.
Any opposition, gentlemen? Doesn't look like there's an opposition.
So that would be December 20th. So unless something comes up, we would not be having that meeting. And then the next meeting after that is Monday, January 3rd, which is incredibly difficult to get an agenda out the week before when we have all the holidays, New Year's Eve, New Year's Day.
You want to move it?
So we would also, I mean, we could either move it or go dark on that day as well.
Any objections, gentlemen?
It all depends on how much stuff's going on by then.
Well, no, no. If there is an issue, then we'll deal with it. All right, if there's no opposition, you got it.
So then right now, it would look like our next regularly scheduled meeting at this time, unless it changes, would be Tuesday, January 18th. And that is because Monday, January 17th is Martin Luther King Jr.'s birthday, and so we have the day off, so the meeting would be moved to the Tuesday.
You have it.
Unless something comes up.
Okay.
Okay. That's all I have.
Okay, and that was item, well, we're...
That was staff communication.
Yes. All right, next item up is matters presented to the audience. Public may address the city council on any item that is on the agenda at the time the item is called. The public may also address the city council on any item not on the agenda that is within authority of the city council. Each speaker is limited to a maximum of five minutes. Unused time may not be yielded to another speaker. The determination of whether an item is within the authority of the city council is discretionary decision made by the mayor. All right, we're going to open this up. If you have something you'd like to speak to us this evening, please come to the podium and give us your name. You have five minutes to explain what's on your mind. And there's anyone online or however we're dealing with this? Okay, we have to take her off. All right.
I'll be quick. Donal Hagan. I just wanted to thank you, council, for approving the resolution that we spoke about last time. I know I've been here three meetings in a row. I will try to be at more meetings, but I just wanted to, you know, give my sincere thanks and appreciation to your leadership.
All right, thank you for being involved. We have Ann Shaddick.
Hi, I'm Ann Shaddick, and I'm not sure whether this is the appropriate time, but I would like to have you explain the process that you went through to make a decision to replace the council and what the process was and how you go about making that decision.
It'll be explained this evening. It'll come in later.
Okay.
Thank you for asking. Is there anyone else? I haven't seen anyone else raise their hand. We're going to go back to, gentlemen, is there anybody here that wants to say anything before we move out of here? We're good? Okay, administrative matters. Staff, approval of Phase Two of the City 2021 reorganization plan. Staff.
It would actually be our finance director for this item.
All righty then.
Good evening, mayor and council members and the public. Before you tonight is a, I'm calling it Phase Two of a reorganization plan that this council actually began a few months back. So this evening, we'll talk a little bit about the background, the reporting structure. I've got a PowerPoint that's coming up. Thank you. Operational efficiencies, job descriptions, and other improvements, including staff schedules. Go ahead, next slide. And then one more, please. So at the beginning of the fiscal year with your annual budget, the organizational chart, and this is a little hard to see, but the organizational chart reflected four manager positions and a analyst position, a new analyst position, to assist the then-current city manager, finance director, HR person, city clerk. Next slide, please. In September, when the city manager left the city, changes were made to separate the city manager, city clerk functions from the finance director, HR functions, and the analyst position was eliminated. So the same number of positions were listed. However, those positions, there was one additional manager, so the analyst position went away. This improved the separation of duties. It also improved workload for that, those management functions. However, it left the staff tasks unaddressed, which left some confusion, some issues with prioritization, and inefficiencies. So the separation here is listed with city manager now has citywide administrative oversight and responsibility, and the city clerk, and then finance director, the other items. Next slide, please. So again, this is kind of a small org chart, but this org chart reflects those changes. And basically, it doesn't add any new positions. It moved budget around but didn't ask for any additional budget. And that's where we were in September. Next slide, please. So since then, the management with staff input have looked at the positions, how do we provide a service to the support staff, to the city manager function? How did the staff know kind of what function they report to and that kind of structure? And so we're presenting this evening, the Phase Two, which is really about the staff and moving them around to make them positioned under either city manager or finance director. And again, a lot of the emphasis on these separations had to do with providing efficiencies and clarity to the tasks and the responsibilities. Next slide. So again, kind of a small org chart, but the org chart would look like this. And there are no new positions in total. However, there are three new job descriptions that are being proposed this evening on this org chart, and no new funding. Next slide, please. So I'm going to go through the job descriptions a little bit and explain kind of those separations, what those functions would be under each job. Again, I want to be clear that even though we're requesting to add new job descriptions, it's because they're just lacking. We just don't have them. And when we start looking at the tasks, they fit more naturally under some job descriptions that are common to government. So the first one I'm going to talk a little bit about is administrative assistant. This city would benefit from having kind of a citywide communications person handling the website, social media, citywide data collection, report writing, publishing. If there were any items that the city manager needed for citywide distribution, any kind of report or whatever, this would be the position that would help assist with that. Coordination of citywide events, calendars, correspondence, should provide a great deal of efficiency to the operation by having someone kind of be the point person for all of that. This position, the current incumbent does provide support to the departments, and so that would remain, although the nature of that may shift around a little bit. This person would also do special projects. So as the council comes to city manager and says, hey, I'd like to look at this or that, if there's not a natural fit someplace else, this would be the special projects person. They would continue to provide front counter assistance to permits, code enforcement, and business license. The next position that we propose adding is an office assistant. This is really reporting to the city manager for deputy city clerk, council meetings, agendas, and minutes, which we already have somebody who's doing that, but she's also doing finance things. So this person would maintain the citywide filing systems, both the physical and electronic, records retention, public records requests with the assistance of the attorney. There may be event scheduling, facility rental coordination, and this person would start learning the recreation activities. Scheduling, tracking provides support to the current recreation coordinator. And of course, continue the front counter, particularly around facility and event activities. The last position we're recommending to add job description for is an accountant. The city currently has accounting technicians but not accountants, so this person would continue to do front office manager, which basically sets standards for customer service and training, assisting in all policies and procedures of professional accounting to kind of, there's a lot of new pronouncements coming out for the profession, and having more than just the finance director know some of these and be able to participate in how do they fit in our procedures would be very beneficial. This person already handles financial transactions, would do some reporting and of course, training. This person would assist in oversight and establishment of financial processes around cash sharing, AR, utility billing, AP, and payroll, it's kind of a broad stroke. This person already does some of these things, but to incorporate more of the accounting profession into it would be helpful. And then audits, internal and external, just to participate in those. As I've talked about before, we have a need for grant tracking and reporting. This person would assist with that. So I want to be clear that there are some financial impacts, although we're not requesting additional appropriation. The funding is available through savings, through the efficiencies, through the reduction in overtime and some of the others. So the administrative assistant, a minor amount increase. The benefit to the city is citywide coordination, efficiencies built into that, and consistent department support. The office assistant, again, a minor amount, 309, provides city manager support for the clerk functions consistently, and the recreation program activities, cross-training. Currently, we only have one person who does all of that. And then the accountant, 351, and the advantage to the city is professional accounting practices and processes to embed those accounting practices into our current processes, and grants administration, which is the tracking and reporting. And this includes, although the ARPA funds will be used, staff will support a lot of functions, this will be the main area that will track all of that. So those are the three job descriptions that we're interested in council approving this evening. The impacts are minor, again, no additional positions, no additional appropriation, just to stabilize the services being provided for the future. Yes, sir?
May I ask, those costs, let's say for the hundred and some odd dollars, is that per month or is that between now and the end of the year?
That's the end of the year. That's for the year.
Is there any way to project what that cost and the new title would be for the following year? Is that dependent upon the new contract or...
It is dependent upon the new contract. As with all positions, they potentially have stepping increases, but the positions that are being proposed would go on the existing salary schedule. They wouldn't, we are not proposing to modify that. That would go through the negotiations you're talking about.
So the position is, whatever the position's called now, let's say account tech two now, you know, moving it up to accountant, for example, that's not like appear on the scale.
It's, yeah, it's not a significant jump in it. That's the whole...
Well, no, no, actually, accountant. You're using the term loosely. I mean, this individual's not an accountant.
This individual would be an accountant, yes.
And they currently work here now?
Yes.
They have an accounting degree?
They don't have an accounting degree, but they have the requisite time of service in this profession.
To qualify as an accountant?
Correct.
So just to clarify to anybody in the audience or even to myself, what we're talking about is not adding new bodies. We're talking about assigning new roles to the bodies that we currently have. Am I understanding it correctly? And this is in effect to increase the efficiency across the department, to make things more structured as far as, hey, you handle this now, you handle this. There's increased responsibilities, some increased costs, but you're telling us that it's not going to affect the current budget moving forward? And it's a restructuring to make things more efficient so people can handle their jobs better and serve the community better?
And absolutely. Serve the community better is one of the main focuses on efficiency, is are we providing the best service to the community. And the other thing is, is it gives a clear direction to staff who they report to.
That's a good thing. I mean, you know, people that work here in the city, you know, they do this job, there's so much crossover, and now to def... so much crossover, and now to define clearly, this is my job, this is my job title, here's what I handle, I think it would make the daily operations of the city run more efficiently. So I think it, I think it looks pretty good.
Thank you.
Claire, I'm going to ask you the tough questions, the ones that people are going to ask me.
Yes.
And the first question I'm going to ask you, you have a workload. You have individuals that deal with this workload. What changes other than the fact that they've been redirected in some of the tasks? The same workload's there, the same people are there.
Correct.
But you're redirecting their tasks, basically, to the same people, in the same place, in the same timeframe?
So if you think about it this way, I would say it focuses. First of all, it provides clarity as to who someone reports to and what their tasks are, but it focuses their attention. So imagine it this way, you're working.
I get it.
Okay.
My question is, why are we changing the pay because of those redirections of those people which are in the same environment, doing the same work, but more focused, which is more efficient? Where do we gain there, other than the efficiency and the redirection? These are the questions I'm going to get asked.
Yes, absolutely. I would say the first and foremost is a better, a better service to the community. So if I'm working on a project, and it's got four parts to it, and I'm only doing part one, and that person's doing part two, and that person's doing part three. So, the reason for the change in salary, let me kind of go over that. We spent a fair amount of time doing research of other cities, particularly in San Joaquin Valley.
Cities our size, with our economy?
And, and big and small. We took big and small out of it.
That's the stuff I need to know.
And then we averaged, we tried to gain similar jobs, which is where we went, wait a minute, we don't have the right job descriptions for what we've got people doing. And then we looked at the pay, and we looked at medium pay, and the average pay, and looked at our existing salary schedules and said, where does this fall? And so, there's, there's some slight changes because of that evaluation. Now, it's not, we didn't hire a professional firm to go out and do this evaluation, but we did do one with the cities close to us.
Okay. So do you think this is worth $15,000 a year difference?
No, and it's not, it's not going to cost you $15,000 a year.
If one month costs us $100 for one individual, times.
It's not a month, that's the rest of the year.
Which is what, a month?
No, no, I'm sorry. That's seven, seven months.
Till June.
Till June.
Yes, yes.
Okay, I was a little confused there.
Yes, I'm sorry.
That makes a difference?
Yes, big difference.
Okay, so my math would be off because that wasn't explained to me. I got it. Okay, well, I've asked the questions they're going to ask me, I've got the answers. I'm good.
This was discussed with the existing staff, had input?
Yes.
From our staff?
And their union.
And their union. And we've got backing of our, our staff, they like the idea where this is going and everything. The best of your knowledge.
I think it's, I think it's a great update.
I like everything I've seen. I was just seeing if we had some.
The top position being split into two, yeah.
Some good buy-in from our staff. Okay.
The staff have provided input as recently as this week, and we've done some tweaks to the job descriptions to kind of make that, make sure that we haven't missed anything, because they do the jobs. So, yeah. And some of, I want to be clear, some of the pay increases because the responsibilities will increase a little bit. It's not significant. It really is more of a juggling, but.
I guess the, oh, sorry.
It's more perception than anything, and that's what I deal with.
Sure.
I deal with perception. So I got to ask those questions because I'm going to get asked them, I got to have the answers.
I appreciate that.
One question I'm going to ask you as well is on this Friday, Monday through Thursday, nine hours a day, and that's because of the nine-hour day, they don't work on a Friday, every other Friday they're off. Is that the concept? You put an extra hour in every day, four days a week, and then the fifth day, half the crews or the internal offices is furloughed, or however you want to put it.
So what we're currently doing is, we're doing three different shifts.
Okay.
So, one of them is eight hours a day, five days a week. One of them is nine hours a day, Monday through Thursday, and every other Friday you have off, the other Friday you work eight hours. The third schedule is the same thing, only alternating Fridays.
Is this applied to all city employees, or just the office?
Just the administration here in City Hall.
Okay.
Okay? It's very inefficient, and it provides less than a stellar service to the community.
I have no doubt.
So, in surveying other cities, there's one city in our county that does 10-hour days, and they have all Fridays off. But all but one city is doing Monday through Thursday office hours, and Fridays closed. And what that provides for you is, if you put everybody on the same schedule, it gives you the opportunity to do things like trainings and, and any kind of team meetings or anything we need to do internally. We really don't have that opportunity. What we do is, we do a meeting in a conference room with the door open, just in case someone walks in the front door, and then we interrupt the meeting and go help the customer. Well, of course, the customer knows they're not getting our full attention either. So this would improve that. It would provide more efficiency, because the person who's working on Friday, they're not getting anything done, because they're stopping.
How do we measure it?
Getting up to.
How do we measure this when it goes into effect?
That's a great question. What do you want to measure?
Well, you're talking about more efficiency. What is it we're going to have we don't have now? You say efficiency, that's a kind of ambiguous word.
True.
What are you defining efficiency as? And how do you measure it?
So, for me, what I'm looking at is, this city runs with very few people. They have great staff, but very few of them. So we can continue to just do business as usual, and over the course of time, keep adding positions. Or, we can say, how can we get the best out of these people, who are great employees, without adding additional?
I think that's fine.
So that's kind of my measurement.
So you're saying, I understand that, and that's what I'm hoping for. My question again is, what's quantitative? How do you, how do you feel or touch or see that?
I don't know.
Okay.
Because over time, it would be additional.
And listen, we have time, and you can tell me as it goes on.
Okay.
What it is you're seeing that we can quantify. The other question I've asked, been asked many times, is why can't we have a lunch hour person available for people who take away from their businesses to come at lunch hour, to pay their bills, to do their city business? How do you respond to that?
I would say that opening at lunch provides the same problem you have on Friday. What you would have to do is, is alternate people taking their lunch break, which means that you've only got maybe two people there, unless someone's on vacation, then you've only got one person. Somebody comes to the counter, if that one person doesn't know what they need, then they're deferring them over to 1:00 anyway. So it's, you, you create the same problem you have on Friday. You just don't have an abundance of staff to be able to handle the counter when you split them up in half like that. Now, we are very open, if somebody needs to come by, and they can only come by at lunch, and they contact us, we will say, what is the nature of the business? And if they say permits, we're going to ask that person to stay and meet with them. We'll make accommodations for those, whatever that is.
So if special circumstances will allow for appointments, they will be addressed?
Yes.
Good to know.
And on Fridays.
Information that people need to hear and know about.
And on Fridays.
Because it's not public knowledge.
Yep.
And this is good that it comes out now, because a lot of these people are going to hear it, and they're going to be able to pass that word on, plus on the internet and wherever else people are attending. And you did a great job answering those questions. Thank you.
Thank you.
Yeah, I would, I would just add to that. It seems like this is the kind of analysis that is necessary to, whether it's a public, you know, organization, like a, like a, like a city or a business, where you're trying to increase the efficiency and serve. I liked how you said the customer comes up to the counter. It's not just a person. It's, it's the customer, the city staff, the city council, we serve the citizens of Escalon. And being up here on the city council, I think we hold kind of a dual role, right? We represent the citizens in regards to the staff, and we represent the staff in regards to the citizens. And I think as long as we're trying to implement policies that can effectively serve both of those groups in the best way, and provide the best customer service, and provide the best morale and working environment for the staff, I think it's a, it's a win-win. So, thank you.
Thank you.
All right, is there any other questions for staff? Okay, so there's no more questions for staff. I assume this is, we're going to open up to the public. If there's anybody in the public you'd like to comment, please come to the podium, give us your name, please. And if there's no one in the audience, anyone on the internet, please chime in if you're And since we have no takers, we're going to move it back to the council for a vote.
I'd like to move on staff's recommendation.
Second. All right, we have a motion, a second, all those in favor, say aye.
Aye.
Aye, motion carries, 5-0. Thank you, gentlemen. Our next item, we're going to bypass, it's going to be moved to the January meeting, number 11. We're going to go now to number 12, recognition of Mayor Protem, Councilmember Jeff Legero.
So, as you are aware, Mayor Protem Legero has served for the city council, for the city of Escalon, for 13 years. And so, knowing that he is going to be moving forward on some future endeavors, we wanted to present him some recognition, and let the mayor take over from here.
Thank you. By the way, staff did a wonderful job, getting a very, very representative doc, plaque here for our departing vice mayor. All right, I'm going to read it. It says here, presented to Jeff Legero. It is a great honor that you are recognized for the 13 dedicated years of public service as a member of the city, a member of Escalon City Council. Councilmember 12-8, 2008, to 12-6, 2021. Mayor 12-15, 2016, to 12-7, 2018. We thank you for your service and beyond this. Jeff brought to this council an element we desperately would have needed, and it really was appreciated. He gave us a lot of insight from a perspective that none of us have, because we're not attorneys. We also have an attorney's act, but this was on the council, and this was kind of a little group here that we appreciated that input when we got it. He's been a very strong supporter of the community in the, in public rights, persons' rights and property rights, and it's been a pleasure to serve with him. Gentlemen, is there anyone like to say something before we give him the plaque?
I don't know what can be said. I think the thing about what Councilmember Legero, or Mayor Protem Legero always offered was a calming voice, and I cannot tell you how many situations that we would have, the audience debating about little issues, big issues, regardless. And it always seemed to be down to Jeff Legero to go, okay, all right, now let's, let me explain the background of the situation, let me calm things down, we're all neighbors and neighbors in this room, and he was able to do it time and time and time again. That's a special talent that you have, and we're going to miss that.
I would echo that. I would also say that Jeff has been a mentor to me. He helped me, he's continued to help me. I always thought he was the smartest guy in the room, and so I'm going to be very sad to see him go, although I'm very excited for his future and everything that it holds for him. So, thanks, Jeff.
Jeff, definitely looking forward to your next move in your career. Excited about it for you. Sad for the city of Escalon, we're losing one of our best folks in this community, in my opinion. I've known you for most of my life, throughout the years, through school and everything. And, yeah, we're going to miss you up here. We definitely enjoy everything that you provide to this community, and wish you well in the future.
Does anyone on staff like to say anything?
I'd like to say something on behalf of Public Works. I just want to say thank you, Jeff, because again, just like what Robert said, you were always the calming one for us. Just like Peter said, no offense to anybody else, you by far are the smartest one that's up there, and we appreciate that.
Hands down.
Yep. But it's just been great having you around, Jeff. And just for, for Public Works concerns, once you're a council member, you're always a council member, you can always reach out to us, we're there for you, you're always a part of this community, and thank you very much.
All right. Any more staff members?
Mr. Legero, you made my transition into chief very, very smooth. You brought insight from a police perspective, and you understood where I was coming from. You also kind of prepared me for what I was going to end up dealing with. I can't thank you enough for the support, the confidence, and standing behind me, and you will be missed.
Is there anybody in the audience like to say anything this evening?
Tammy Alcanner, if you don't remember me. I just wanted to say what a pleasure it was to work with you, Jeff, all of these years, and I just echo everybody's sentiments. The calming demeanor that you had, and how you could take control of a room regardless of the situation. I remember your, two years of mayor recently, and we had, you know, quite a bit of uproar in our council chambers, and you were always managed to bring it down. So, I wish you the best of luck in your future adventure, and I'll call it adventure instead of an endeavor, right? We always like to take good trips. So, again, I just echo all of the sentiment here, and appreciate the time that I, that you spent with me when you were the mayor, and all your time on the council, it's always a pleasure to work with you.
All right, anyone else? Here we go.
Well, first, let me say that it's always been a pleasure since I was on the Ripon City Council, worked with the Escalon City Council. We're like mirror images of each other, but as far as Jeff goes, and Ed and I've served together since, what, 2002?
It's been a while.
And I ended my city council career in 2014, but I would say probably the thing that I appreciated most, other than, than his sage wisdom in so many incidences where we talked about things that affect not only Escalon, but Ripon, is when we served together on COG, which is San Joaquin Council of Governments. For those who haven't had the opportunity, I know, Peter, you've served on LAFCO, and kind of similar, but a much larger body, 12 members. But it is interesting in regards to the subjects that we broached, but more importantly, what I always appreciated was that Jeff always had my back, because oftentimes, Escalon and Ripon don't necessarily fit with some of the other cities in the county. Nothing against them, but we have a different perspective here in South County. So for that reason, I want to thank you certainly for your friendship and all the things that we've been able to do when we were in city council, and even, you know, my current position, I've always appreciated your insights in regards to what's happening in Escalon. And so, I want to wish you the best. I know you will succeed. I look forward to seeing you periodically over time, but again, you did a great job, and certainly a credit to the community, as the other council members are, in regards to making not only Escalon, but San Joaquin County a better place to live. So, thank you.
Thank you. All right, anyone else? All right, Jeff, again, thank you very much. Let's have a few words.
Hold on, hold on, Richard.
All right.
Richard for march.
All right, here we go.
For march.
Okay.
On three. One, two, three.
I appreciate everybody, all the very kind words, not deserved, but I really appreciate them. It's been an absolute honor and a privilege to represent the community and to try and do the right thing for the community for many years here. And I think the, the big takeaway is you have a fantastic staff here. I think the presentation clarity of us tonight kind of demonstrates that we do so much with very few staff members. The staff members that are here are absolutely outstanding. And, you know, when, when I first got on the council in 2008, things were kind of starting to enter a freefall with the Great Recession. And we had changes at city manager level, at police chief level, we collapsed in on ourselves to get very lean and try and, you know, continue to provide the excellent service that the community deserves and expects. And I think the staff absolutely succeeded in doing that. We finally convinced Tammy to step into the role of city manager, and I don't think she was ever really wanting that position, but she stepped up and did it for many years for us, and got us through a very difficult time, and really put us on a, on a path to where I think we're financially healthy. We're in a much better position going forward to handle whatever the future may hold, whether it's an up economy or a down economy, we're going to be just fine. We maintain a pretty conservative budgeting process, we have a conservative budget, and we have a healthy reserve, and that's really what got us through some very tough times financially. So, I think Dominique is stepping into a role, although it's interim right now, she's stepping into the role, and she has very good background and very good experience working with Tammy and carrying along that tradition to make sure that, that the community receives those services as they expect and deserve, and that we are financially on a, on an excellent path to make sure that we can continue to provide good service for everybody. We have some opportunities, and... We have some opportunities, and, uh, the focus has been infrastructure, and infrastructure, I think, is gonna need to be the focus for quite a while, to make sure that we can continue to, to deliver, you know, water, sewer, garbage services, and make sure that we have a absolutely solid plan going forward, and I think we do, I think there's been some long-term planning, uh, taking place going forward, particularly with infrastructure, and I really think, uh, the water system is gonna benefit, we finally have a very intelligent and affordable, uh, approach to bringing surface water into the community to diversify our water system. I think the, the council will be, uh, very smart to continue on that path and make sure that we have, uh, good services for the long term. Again, thank you to the staff, thank you to everybody for making this a very easy transition coming on board to become a council member, it was very educational, and there was a lot of help from everybody to make sure that we had the information that we needed so that we could make, you know, thoughtful, intelligent decisions and try and do the right thing for the city at all times, but, uh, whoever ends up in this seat, and I know the, the existing council has an absolutely fantastic staff to deal with, and they will move heaven and earth to try and make sure that the city has everything that they need and the community is well-served, so, thanks everybody for that, and, uh, I appreciate the time, uh, being on this council, and I hope that it carries on in a easy, peaceful, relaxed manner, so, thank you. Thank you.
Okay, now we're gonna move on to item thirteen. Discussion, options, persons, nominations to fill the vacancy on the city council by Councilman, uh, Jeff Leggero's leaving.
Thank you, Mayor.
You're welcome.
At the November fifteenth city council meeting, Mayor Protem Jeff Leggero shared that he will be stepping down from the council to pursue other future endeavors, and that his last meeting would be December sixth. The city later received his resignation in writing on November eighteenth, effective at the end of the council meeting, um, tonight. In accordance with the government code, if a vacancy of the city occurs in an elective office, the council shall, within sixty days from the commencement of the vacancy, either fill the vacancy by appointment or call a special election to fill the vacancy. If the council calls a special election, the special election shall be held on the next regularly established election date, not less than a one hundred and fourteen days from the call of the special election. The person elected to fill the vacancy would hold the office for the unexpired term of the former incumbent. If the council fills the vacancy by appointment, the person appointed to fill the vacancy would hold the office until the next general municipal election scheduled for November first, two thousand twenty-two. At the two thousand twenty-two general election, the unexpired balance of the term of this seat's office would be added to the city's election ballot. The candidate who is elected at that election to fill the vacancy would serve the remaining two-year term. This seat would then return in the two thousand twenty-four election as a four-year seat. With Mayor Protem Leggero's departure, it is important to note that any local committee appointments in which he served on will also need to be updated when the vacancy is filled, and a new Mayor Protem will be needed. The committees are as follows, um, he serves as alternates, uh, for the San Joaquin County Advisory Water Commission, which expires, uh, at the, uh, beginning of two thousand twenty-four. He serves as the alternate for the CDBG Policy Advisory Committee, which expires the end of two thousand twenty-two. He serves as the alternate for the SJ COG Board of Directors, which also expires at the end of two thousand twenty-two, and the alternate for the San Joaquin Valley Unified Air Pollution Control District City Selection Committee, which also expires at the end of two thousand twenty-two. So, we would need those, someone to be appointed to those positions once that position is filled, and, okay, where did my page go? Fiscal impact is minimal if the council fills the vacancy by appointment. If the council instead calls for a special election, the cost to conduct a special election would come from the city's general fund, the costs for a special election are estimated between fifteen to twenty-five thousand. Do you have any questions of staff or council?
I do not. My question is, how do we proceed in the nomination process?
Well, the first thing that's, that the council needs to vote on and decide is whether you're gonna do a special election or appointment, that's the number one thing we need to decide.
Gentlemen, do I have, uh, any input on that?
The big thing is if we can come to consensus and we can do an appointment.
I would echo that as well.
I would agree, the fiscal impact of spending twenty-five to, you know, twenty-five thousand dollars when it's, what, at a one-year appointment until the next election?
Right.
And save the city some money, I don't think that's a wise use of our money.
I agree. Do we have a consensus on that, gentlemen?
Before I, before that, Mark, does that, okay, whoever's appointed, is, is, does it necessarily have to be a five oh, or does it three two, or what is that?
It's just majority.
Majority, okay, that's, that's fine, that's fine.
Gentlemen, do we have consensus that we would rather appoint and do go through an election?
Well, I have a, trying to think through this, um, so obviously, uh, you have a vacancy, so, it's kind of an unusual circumstance, um, everybody up here is gonna try to find the person that they wanna get into this seat and, and try to encourage them to, to become an appointment. My question is, how, how do you, how does somebody approach the city to become appointed to the seat?
Well, that's up for the city council to decide, there, there is no established procedure that the city council has for that, so it's going to be up for discussion after, uh, if the city council moves to go by appointment, it's literally, you need to come to an agreement as to how the city council wants to do that.
How does that individual approach the council, or does the council go out and find somebody and then we just agree on that person?
Uh, it's, uh, they would be here tonight, I would assume, if they were interested in going for the position, or they may come at the public comment for this item and come up and ask this council to set a different meeting to discuss or receive nominations. It's gonna really be up to this council after you determine whether you wanna go by appointment or special election, there is no standard procedure.
So, if somebody's here tonight that wants to, you know, throw their name out there, they can get up and speak when?
During the public comment period for the discussion of how to replace.
Okay.
We first need to determine, honestly, we first need to determine whether this can be by appointment or special election, then the discussion turns to nominations, anybody wanting to throw their hat in the ring, and how this council wants to figure out how to appoint if they're going in that direction.
Okay.
Does that make sense, or did I?
It makes sense to me.
Well, let me get rid of the elephant in the room, I know there's, I'm looking at plenty of really good possible candidates out there right now, so I'm all for an appointment.
I am too. Do we have a consensus, we're gonna go to appointment?
Yeah.
Do we need a vote?
You, you will, but we need a public comment to determine if the public input on whether we should do an election or a nomination.
All right, from the public.
Just for the record, I'm abstaining from this process.
Thank you.
Is there anyone in the public who'd like to comment? All right, how about online? Whoop, we got somebody, here we go. Give us your name, please.
Linda Walker.
Very good.
Um, I'm here in support, well, I would like to throw my name into the ring, um, I did email out to council and, uh, described some of my background to you, I am from Escalon, I've lived here since nineteen eighty-eight, uh, and so I ha, I am an educator and a real estate agent and live, uh, within city limits, I volunteer, um, when I can, and I try to use my expertise and background as well as possible to contribute to the community, um, and I do feel like this would be a next step for me to be able to contribute. Um, I have been on the Recreation Commission with the City of Escalon since two thousand fourteen, um, and I guess I would love the opportunity to be considered for this position.
Thank you.
Thanks.
Thanks for being here.
Is there anyone else?
Uh, Mr. Mayor, this is Sean Strowman calling online.
Yes, sir, go ahead.
First of all, if I can back up one second, um, just, uh, Councilman Leggero, I know that we didn't necessarily see eye to eye on some issues, but, um, as a planning commissioner, it was great working with you, uh, through the issues that we faced as a city. I wish you all the best on your new endeavors and as your professional career and your, hopefully, political career grow, uh, don't forget your friends in Escalon.
Thank you, Sean, I appreciate it.
And, um, you know, th, this position, I, I, I also, I would wish to be considered for the Jeff's vacant position, I, um, I'm now on my second term as planning commissioner, I've served as Chair of the Planning Commission, as well as I'm currently Vice Chair, um, I'm very active in the community, uh, most of you know that I currently am the Cub Master for Cub Scout Pack two sixty-three, I wish I could be there in person this evening, however, I have had a conflict and a family obligation, uh, but I know all of you, and I wish you all the best, thank you.
All right, anyone else? Oh, there's Ann, go ahead, Ann.
I, I'm particularly interested, but let me just comment on the process, uh, I, I found it very frustrating because, um, we, I certainly heard about the opening, didn't know who to contact, um, didn't know what would happen after that person was contacted, would somebody call, would they interview, would they ask what our interests were, there was nothing to help a candidate through the process.
Did you think possibly maybe calling the city and asking them?
Well, I did call the city, I did express my interest in the position, that was it, so I didn't know was somebody gonna call me and ask me, I heard that the mayor would be making the nomination, um, so, I think there is a process, I, I think you should, in the future, have a process that's advertised, that people know who to call, there's a deadline and an expectation, so that you can hear what the candidate has to say. My interest, of course, is representing the seniors, but that's not my only interest, my interest is, um, not so much growth of Escalon, but working with Escalon to develop it into a more, it's into a town where people want to stop, that we have more stores, more places for people to come, it's a safe place to be, which means looking at, do we have enough police, do we have enough fire department, that type of thing, so, I just would encourage you, in the future, to make it easier for a candidate to know how to go about the process.
Okay.
I think that's what we're working on right now, is deciding whether it's a special election or an appointment and how we're gonna go about that, so, I think we will get to that cruxed for you here in short order, hopefully.
So, if somebody's appointed, they, they have to run again, right, in two thousand twenty, when?
In November, two thousand twenty-two.
So essentially, they, they could become a city council member of Escalon without being elected because they were appointed for the better part of a year and make decisions regarding Escalon and, and the, and all the decisions and have a legal voice in that without being a, an officially elected official, am I understanding that right?
Correct, it'd be an appointed official, they'd be appointed to that spot until November.
Obviously, it goes without saying that that's kind of a weird thing to, to be on the city council without being elected, and I think it, it's something that needs to be handled, uh, appropriately, um, I mean, I have people in mind that I think would be great up here, and, um, so, I, I guess I'm okay with an appointed position, but I just wanna, you know, publicly recognize that it's a, it's kind of a unique situation that needs to be handled very delicately.
Come on, please, and your name, please.
Yeah, good evening, uh, my name's Casey Ryan, um, I am a, I married into the, the City of Escalon, if you will, my wife grew up here, um, and I spent ten years at Gallo, uh, working in the wine industry, left Gallo to serve as the Youth Director, uh, at Heritage Church here in Escalon, and, um, as a parent, uh, I don't, I don't like a lot of the direction that our state is going, and, uh, unless people are willing to get involved, um, we don't have any right to complain, and so I'm here, uh, just to express interest in this position, uh, I don't have an agenda, but I want to serve and, um, do what's right for my kids, uh, for our community, and, um, and I take this responsibility very seriously.
Thank you, Casey.
Thanks, Casey.
Hi, my name's, uh, Dr. Andrew Hagan, um, I, uh, been a veterinarian in town since two thousand six, um, I care about this community quite a bit, I mean, I've grown up here since I was a kid, and I want to help the community if I can, uh, with no, obviously, underlying agenda, my agenda is what's best for the community, um, that's, that's it, um, my position affords me kind of a, a unique perspective because I do talk to everyone in the community on a regular basis, and so I do get a lot of input from people, frustrations, whatever it is, on the regular, and, so it does, um, help me to kind of understand that voice in the community that's kind of that background, if you will, and so, um, I would like to put my hat in the ring, I guess, and, uh, hopefully be able to serve my community in a humble and honorable way, thank you.
Thank you. All right, now, is there anyone else in, uh, online? Is there anyone in the audience who'd like to speak? If not, we're gonna close it, we're gonna bring it back to a vote for the council to decide whether we go public on a public election or whether or not we're gonna do this by appointment. All those, uh, we need a motion.
You want a consensus, is it consensus or is it a vote?
Is it a vote or a consensus?
No, you need a motion, and you have to vote.
Okay, well, yeah, I move that we, uh, we fill the vacancy of, uh, Mayor Protem Leggero by appointment.
Okay.
I'll second that.
We have a motion and second, all those in favor say aye.
Aye.
Goes opposed? Motion carries five oh.
Four oh.
Four oh, I'm sorry, I didn't hear you.
Four oh, Jeff's no longer up here, remember that?
Oh, that's right, I'm sorry.
Jeff, just leave it there.
My telepathic ways were messed up. All right, anyway, so it's four oh, and now accept a motion, I mean, a nomination, do we have a nomination?
Do we do that tonight? What, what's?
We have sixty days. My suggestion at this point was you, would be for you to figure out the process, how you want to do this, now we're on a, there's a clock, there is no, um, there's a maximum time here, we only have sixty days from when, um, um, Councilmember Leggero had put in his written resignation, um, there's no minimum time, literally, it could be done starting tomorrow, since, um, Mr. Leggero, um, Councilmember Leggero's vacancy doesn't happen until after the meeting, so we're not doing any appointments to, this evening, but sometime between tomorrow and the end of the sixty days, which we're, I think we're about ten days in now, that appointment has to be made. Now, I would suggest you come up, discuss with the process of how you want to handle the persons that have spoken that are want, as well as your own personal.
What I'm gonna recommend is we have a meeting relatively soon, and at the meeting we will have nominations and we'll go from there. Does that sound reasonable?
Is this something we can do at the next council meeting in January?
Well, we're gonna have, no, they have to do it before that.
Have a special meeting before then.
So, um, I was talking to Councilman Swift about it, and he's one who had a conflict on time, but seems to be okay with a Wednesday meeting in the morning, is that possible?
Yeah, we would get a special meeting agenda out tomorrow.
Okay.
Before whatever the time is, and so, if you could give us, you know, a few hours to get it posted, because it has to be twenty-four hours, so we have it at ten AM, I have to get it up by ten AM tomorrow.
Okay, so we'd like, go ahead.
There needs to be a public meeting.
Correct, all meetings are public, yes, it would be a special meeting.
At ten o'clock.
At whatever that time is, yes, and it would be posted on our website, put outside.
I'd like to call for that meeting on the Wednesday, ten o'clock, and let's get it done and move on.
And let's specify that's when you're gonna be taking any type of nomination.
That's correct.
Hearing any type of, um, presentation.
Absolutely. It'll be very transparent.
Would the council or the mayor like any written statements provided to the council prior to that meeting?
Let me ask you gentlemen, gentlemen, do we need a written statement or a verbal okay?
Written statement.
Yeah, yeah, a written statement.
I think we should run the appointment as, as closely as an election as possible, I I guess the only thing would be us four remaining City Council members are the only people voting. And so we should run this as if the candidates are trying to be elected by us. And it shouldn't be just a, a good old boys' club of, hey, my friend, and, and you and me, and we vote them on, and now they're on. As, as much as some people up here may disagree with that, I think that's the best course of action. We should have written statements. We should interview the candidates. We should have it be, you know, frankly, we should take it out to the 60 days and really dialogue this and, and analyze the candidates before we make a decision.
I'm going to ask a question of the council, because I never heard the answer to this and didn't ask the question prior. What did you do when you decided to appoint me for Peter's five months of leave?
We just basically.
What was that? Did we do a decision or did you just pick?
We, we had, you nominated by somebody, and then you seemed to fit the bill, and we picked you.
Okay. Just checking. I'm trying to see if there's a consistency that we can.
No, it's not a big deal.
To, to the point about waiting the whole 60 days, I think that whoever we appoint, I think that we owe it to them to give them the greatest amount of time.
Get on board.
To start, to get on board, start the studying process, start asking questions, start learning about, you know, what's, what's capital proven planned, you know, what's a, what's an enterprise fund, you know, what's, what's the Brown Act, things like that. I think that we need to give them as much time as possible so they get as, this much down as possible. Now, here's the problem, though. If we're going to have a, a meeting, if it's going to be a public meeting, which I agree, you know, then if it's going to be during the day, then, you know, we have to have at least the written statements, because I don't want to have it in a situation where we're basically in this, if we're going to allow these people to speak as well, I don't want to have, put it in a situation where maybe half of them might not be able to come to it because they're working. You know, so that's, like I say, if we're going to put that structure on it, then I'll, then we almost got to have it at night, I would think, you know.
You're looking at me, Councilmember Swift, but.
Oh, no.
That's right, correct. It's up to you, this council, to decide.
Yeah.
This procedure. Exactly.
So the, like, like our attorney mentioned, the government code doesn't, doesn't give any direction on that because they're already giving you the, the choice of appointment or election. And so if you choose appointment, then as long as a majority of you agrees on how that occurs, you could move forward with that, and they want you to do it within that 60-day window. And that is an effort to get it done right away because we realize that we need five full people on the council in order to conduct the city's business, so.
Okay. Well, can I get a consensus to move it to Wednesday, and let's get it done?
No. I don't, I don't consent to that.
Just a moment, please. I'm asking for a consensus. Do we have a consensus as willing?
If we're going to do it on Wednesday, I probably prefer Wednesday evening. The only reason for that is just because to give, if we're going to allow everybody another opportunity to speak, then we need, we need to make it possible so they can speak because.
Do you want to make that a motion?
Yeah, yeah, yeah. Move that we have a meeting Wednesday evening, 7:00.
Like, Wednesday, like, in a couple of days?
It's going to be December 8th, if it's this week.
Okay, do I have a second?
December 8th, what time?
7:00.
7:00.
7:00 p.m.
So a special meeting where people would come and bring their statements, their written statements, and we could, they could make their pitch, and we could question them, essentially?
I know it's a super short notice, but it'd be nice to have the written statements ahead of time, if possible.
That is, two days is, is absurd. I think we need more time than that. To let, let, people need to know that there's a vacant seat available, and if they want to organize their schedule to come in and make a pitch, they should have time to prepare. So I would say this week is, is no, no, it's, it's got to be, that's unreasonable.
How about the next Monday night?
The next Monday night might be more reasonable. Yeah.
That would be December 13th, Monday.
We're running in the middle of the holidays, too, guys.
No, the 13th is not a holiday.
Yeah, no, you're right, Mayor. I don't want to go too much later than that.
All right. The holidays, do, what do we want to do here? Let's have a motion one way or another.
I think Monday, December 13th, at 7:00 p.m., the same time as the City Council meeting, makes sense to me. It gives people time to prepare their statements, to come in and, and make a pitch. And if we ram this thing through, I mean, do you, do you understand the optics of that? It's horrible. And so I, I'm not going to be a part of that in any way. So we need to give people as much time as they can, and we need to get as many candidates as we can, and we need to make an informed decision here.
Then that's fine. Monday, December 13th, at 7:00 p.m. Really nice to have the statements ahead of time. And here's the other thing. If everybody has a chance to talk with whoever has been expressing their interest, I think it'd be a great thing, too. Because here's the thing. It's kind of like, you know, choosing anybody or appointing anybody. Chief of Police, you already have a pretty good, for example, for example.
David?
He wasn't appointed. You already have a pretty good idea if you have a chance to talk with them, read their statements, get a feel for who they are, get a feel, will this be a good fit at this time? Okay. So therefore, I think your last bit of information would be if you came to speak on that meeting, Monday, 7:00 p.m.
And may I suggest, council, that, that the written statements be optional. This way, if somebody misses it, they could still get up and speak and make their pitch. But that all written statements, if they are going to do it, turn it in by Thursday, close of business. This way, it can be attached to the agenda, and others can read it before the actual, you know, meeting.
So would we also, at that meeting, pick somebody? Is that what we're doing?
That, that's what I thought was happening.
And that would be in an open, open forum?
Open forum, nominations and appointment. And then that person would be, has the right to be sworn in immediately upon the appointment.
That'll be the only intended item on the agenda.
Correct. It's all.
All right. So when you have a motion.
I'll second that.
All right. Motion second. We're going to have it on Monday, the 13th, at 7:00.
Yeah.
And those who are interested will bring a, will have their written statement submitted by Thursday of the week before.
That's this Thursday, November, December.
And we will then, that evening, pick and appoint.
And that's Thursday, December 9th.
There you go.
It's the 9th at, by 5:00 p.m.
December what, please?
9th.
Oh, it's the 9th. The Thursday is.
Correct.
Correct.
Any written statements, we'd have them submitted by Thursday, December 9th, 5:00 p.m. And then whatever's submitted will be ran with the special agenda. So we would attach those to your special agenda with that item. That way, everybody receives a copy on the council.
Okay, so.
So if they want to submit by email, we can have them email it either directly to my email, if they know my email, or we can do the City Clerk email, which is cityclerk@cityofescalon.org.
Any way to get it out to us so that we've got the best.
We can put a Facebook post out, too, if you like.
Okay.
Okay. So we're set.
Yep.
Let's move on to item.
We didn't vote on that.
You didn't vote. We have voted on this?
Oh, that's right.
All right. All those in favor?
Aye.
Aye.
Okay, it's four o. Then we have one upstate. All right. Let's move on to 14. Conduct nominations for the position of Mayor Pro Tem.
So we have agendized this item, in case this is something that the council wishes to do at this time. If it is not something, and you wanted to wait until the fifth position is filled, we can push it to the next meeting.
Get it done. All right. So we need a nomination?
You would vote for nominations.
Councilman Swift for the position of Pro Tem for the duration of Pro Tem Leggero's. Correct. Term, there we go.
I would like to comment on this. I think that the way the history of Escalon City Council has worked is that we basically kind of rotate who becomes Mayor Pro Tem, and then that person, if they get reelected, they become mayor. I've been on the City Council for three years now. Councilman Swift was the mayor. Before that, he was the Mayor Pro Tem. I would like to nominate myself for Mayor Pro Tem. I, I do think I have the experience now, the knowledge of the city. And moving forward, I think that is a position that I would like to hold.
I think we had a previous nomination or a motion, did we not? Didn't I not nominate Mr. Swift?
During nomination, any of you can nominate any, anyone for that.
I did nominate someone.
Yeah, and so we just take all the nominations, and then you would conduct a vote on each one.
All right. So we have two nominations.
Mark, to be right. I probably should be abstaining from this vote since I'm, since my name's mentioned as the.
It's kind of hard when you only got three people left.
True. Ironically, actually, probably Councilmember Crummick should do the same thing.
That's right.
I'm hoping, I'm hoping that Jeff's in on this one, by the way.
No, I think this is all internal. It's not, I.
I think the mayor should abstain.
I don't think there needs to be any abstentions on this whatsoever, except maybe from Councilmember Leggero, since he's not going to be here. But I, there, there doesn't need to be any abstentions on this.
All right, so.
Sounds like the.
We have two nominations, and so now we need a motion for one, correct? I would move that we appoint Councilman Swift to that position.
I would second that motion.
We have a motion and a second. All those in favor?
Aye.
Those opposed?
Aye.
We have a three to one. We have a new Vice Mayor. Congratulations, Mr. Swift. All right. Let's move on to council communication. Let's start with Mr. Pratch.
Hey, we seem to skip over item 11, the Jilton franchise. What, what happened?
It's been put off to the next meeting, January. I think I've mentioned that. I don't know.
Yeah, we've, we've continued that item to the, to a January meeting.
Okay.
All right.
Well, I'd just like to, a lot of good discussion tonight. I don't have any hard feelings against anybody. I'm not even sure if I'm going to run again in 2022. So I, I just want to say again that I, I really appreciate Jeff being up here. I, I consider him a, a friend, a mentor, and, you know, the thing that, that gets me is, he's been a part of this community for so long, not just on the City Council, but just, just a guy living here, you know, with his family. And, and I just want to thank him again for everything that he's done, what he means to me, the voice he's been up here. And I just, I just want to say thanks again, Jeff, and good luck with everything.
Thank you, Peter.
All right?
Appreciate it.
Also, to the, the appointment of his seat, I think we just, it, it's in the best interest of everybody, the council, the, the community, the community's perception of this council, that we do this as, as open and transparent as possible and give everybody a chance and not just try to ram somebody through. We, we've seen that in, in politics many times, and I don't think that's something that befits us. Looking forward to next year. I think there's a lot of exciting things happening. I think the city's in a good spot, and I'm excited to just continue on. Thank you, staff. Thank you, Claire, for that presentation. I think that was great. And just, I guess we're not going to meet again, so Merry Christmas, everybody, and, and hope you have a Happy New Year.
Okay, you finished?
Yes.
Okay, let's move over to Councilman Bellinger.
Echo the sentiments, Claire. Great presentation. Looking forward to the staff and how that works out. I think it's going to be a great thing. Echoing all the sentiments here for Jeff again. Thank you for all the wisdom you've imparted with everybody here, and looking forward to what you're going to do next in your professional life there. Don't be a stranger in Escalon. Just for the community, Christmas on Main was great. I, I can't remember a bigger crowd than what we had on Saturday night. I think everybody had a great time out there. It was a little bit chilly out there, but everybody made it through and had a great time. So thank you for the participation. Looking forward to another event just like that. Chief, any words on that? Anything?
There was more people there than Park Feet.
I was wondering about that. So, great.
It was quite impressive.
Good. And I think that's all I've got for tonight.
Okay, Councilman Swift.
I'd like to echo what Councilmember Bellinger said. Very, very nice job and efficiency, logistics, logistics, efficiency. So we're going to see how this works out, and got to give it a shot. Got to give it a shot. And also, I want to thank everybody who did come out for Christmas on Main. Wow, what a great event. What a great community outpouring public works, did a stellar job, as well as PD, and, you know, doing your part to make this a community success. And this is the kind of stuff that's, makes a fabric of this community. Very, very heartening to see that kind of a turnout, not just with the community, but the participants, and the parade, and the floats, all these. People go crazy on this one. It's great. It is great. I did want to relay something very quickly, and this is regarding, I got a call about 6:00 tonight regarding the San Joaquin County redistricting, and I hope this isn't too unconventional, but I'd like to give some of my time to, to Supervisor Chuck Wynn, because I think he can describe it better than I can, because I just barely even have a thumbnail sketch. Supervisor Wynn, what, what plan are they looking at voting for tomorrow at the county level? Which, which redistricting plan? Where are we going to be at?
Give us some good news.
Well, the, the majority of the board decided that Escalon, Ripon belong in District Five, which is Tracy.
Crazy?
Tracy Mountain House. So I, I'll leave this with you. I, I did a little comparison. You know, when we did the congressional redistricting, I chaired that committee, and we did an online survey, which was, the consultant said that, that if we got 4,000 responses, it was gold. We got almost 8,000 responses. And so it's pretty comprehensive, but I'll give each one a copy. And, and the reason I, I brought this is just, if you look at the colors, the yellow and there's, there's a light blue there, but these are the cities across the top. And if you look and see, and, and it talks about homelessness, it talks about water, it talks about agriculture, it talks about climate change, it talks about education, et cetera. And so as, as you go down the list on, on the left-hand side, and then you go across the cities, the yellow are the top three cities that, that scored on this particular subject, and then the light blue are the top, the three bottom. And what's interesting about it is if you look at the, the coordination, the cities here, this is Escalon on the left, this is Lowdy in the middle, and this is Ripon on the right. They're identical, almost identical. And then if you look at, at the yellow, Lathrop here, Antica here, and Stockton there. Those are the yellow. So one of the things we really talked about in the committee of redistricting for congressional and state, state offices was community of interest. Making sure that, that those cities, communities, et cetera, have a common interest, because when they're represented, you want to make sure that the representation is cohesive and, and collaborative in regards to a particular topic, et cetera. And so anyway, what essentially the, the majority of the board want to do is they want to put Lathrop, Antica in three, and then they want to put Escalon and Ripon, which balances the population in five. And so I'll give each one a this, but the reason I was here is not only to give you this, but to offer that if any of you have an opportunity to, to, to come to the meeting and, and make a comment, that would be appreciated, because I'm just one voice, although I, I'm, I, I, there's, there's more to my presentation than this. In regards to, one of the reasons that I see the move towards putting Escalon and Ripon in District Five as opposed to keep it in District Four, which is my current district, is because, I'll put it this way, it provides a, 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 a political change in the electorate in three years. So what happens is, as opposed to a, an election in 2024, which was only won by 710 votes, it changes the dynamic for the reelection, for a better opportunity for candidates who want to run in that particular district. And so that's the real challenge. And, but more importantly, again, Lowdy, Ripon, Escalon are really three unique cities in the county. If you look District Four, for example, in regards to the, and I don't like to get into the Ds and the Rs, but, but if you look at, at Four, it is by far Republican and very, very light on the Democrat. The other four districts are majority Democrat, et cetera. And then, of course, you, no party preference. It's not about Ds and Rs. It's about representation for the constituents that you serve, and that's really the challenge. So, anyway, I'll, I'll give these to you, but again, if any of you have an opportunity, Mayor, I, I emailed you, and you don't have to call me back, by the way.
Yeah, no.
But, but the fact is, is that, to be honest with you, I believe, and you all's been sitting on, on the dais for a number of years, it is much more effective for somebody standing in this position, speaking to you, and somebody sitting up there discussing it among their peers. That's just a fact. And so, again, if you have an opportunity, if you, if you don't, if you want to send a letter, for example, or, or an email, or whatever.
Wednesday's the next meeting.
Meeting on this is, is tomorrow at 1:30 in the afternoon. We hold it over for, for the afternoons, which it'll probably go most of that time. But, again, so I'll, I'll give this to you. Any questions at all? It's, it's interesting from the standpoint that with the, with, with the one that I chaired, the congressional pretty much came out the way we recommended. It's almost entirely San Joaquin County, which is opposed to the two districts we had previously. And also, the, the assembly districts, although the one on the east side, which, which you're in, goes into Stanislaus and actually goes into Sacramento County, so it's a little wider or longer. But the one that is on the west side is pretty much what we asked for, which was basically Stockton to Tracy, which is, you know, more, lack of a better term, liberal. And so, again, the representee for those particular districts, I think, can, can effectively represent them because it's pretty much homogeneous in regards to values and priorities. And I think that's the important thing, as opposed to splitting it up. So, again, thanks for the time. Thanks, Robert, for the.
Is this a done deal already?
Maybe. I'll put it that way. Maybe, I'll put it that way. The reason, reason I say that, Ed, is, is we've had a couple of discussions. There's been some controversy over the, over the way the recommendation was finally voted on. Tomorrow, the, the expectation is to some degree that, that what the majority voted on at the last meeting will just be formally adopted. I don't plan on that happening. I have a, not only this to talk about, I have some other statistics to show in regards to the dynamic of how that will change the political makeup of the county, certainly the South County. So we'll see what happens, you never know. I hate.
How many members are there on the board now?
Five.
And do you know what the vote was?
Three, two.
Interesting.
Yeah, and so I, I always, you know, and I, and I served on city council as you all have for, and, and you've served as long as I have. And, and you know, I learned a long time ago, I never predict outcomes. I can guess based upon past practice what, what way a particular member may go. But I would just put it this way, there, there are some dynamics involved. I just hope that, that the common sense will, will overrule some of the other things that are happening with the board.
There's something going on, because it don't make any sense at all.
Well, I, I would agree with you. In fact, when we went through this process, I, I was really disappointed because in, in the discussions that we had from the board, which are a couple of updates, there was never talked about putting Escalon and Ripon in District Five. That just came out of the blue with, after the last meeting, and I won't go into the details of how that came about. But and here's, when I talked to the, to my advisory committee, which made up about twenty-five organizations, and one, it's not about D's and R's, it's not about candidates, it's not about incumbents, it's about ten years of representation. And the real bottom line is, you need to look and see who, whoever that person may be, who will represent that particular population in the future. And, and the more consistency you get amongst, and I, I've been blessed, to be honest with you, in my district, it's over half the county geographically, at about the same population. But from, from Ripon to Escalon, up to Linden, to Lockford, to Thornton, to Lodi, it's almost consistent as far as values and priorities. It's been very easy for me to represent this district as it is for the other supervisors. And although, for example, on COG, there's three members of the Board of Supervisors, often I, I vote against my other two supervisors because their districts are different than mine. And so that's the important thing. So again, I, I want to appreciate the time. Thanks, Robert. Thank you, Mayor. Thanks for your opportunity. If you can, I'll leave this with you and.
Appreciate your contributions.
And finally, I wanted to say, from the, from the mean orchards of Stanhagel Road to now, I've known Jeff a very, very, very long time. And I'll tell you what, your, your leadership has been a blessing in this town. Your knowledge and ability to, to manage and to be a leader and has, this town is a better place because of you. And that's something that you will always have with you and that's something that I think we'll always remember, that, you know what, this town's a better place because of Jeff Leggero.
Definitely.
Thanks, Robert.
Thanks.
With that, we'll let you have your final, final.
Okay. And thank you again to the community for the support and the trust you've had in me over the last thirteen years. I absolutely have enjoyed this position and getting out, listening and trying to represent you the best I could. Try and make sure that we, as a council, were representing the community that, that hired us. And it's been an absolute privilege. It's been another privilege in my life to work with an amazing staff. A staff that has been, you know, absolutely responsive and absolutely had the, the community's best interest in, in heart the entire time. And you see it, you know, our Public Works guys are amazing. They, they are responsive and they take care of problems and they are problem solvers and they're proactive. They don't necessarily wait around for somebody to give them a call. They see something, they take care of it. Our police department, the same way. You don't have a community like this, you know, and not have a stellar police department that actually goes out there, communicates with the, the city, with the citizens and tries to find out what's going on and what they need to do. And I think we got a great, you know, Public Works Superintendent. I think we have an absolutely great police chief and they understand the community and what the community needs. I think our interim finance director stepped up and done a great job. I think it's, it's been a long time coming to take a look at the organization and really put together a plan to, to make it reflect what's actually happening behind that counter. So I think that is super important. You know, Dominique, I appreciate everything you've done for us, from Development Services to City Manager. And just let the entire staff know how much I appreciate the work that they've done and how good they've been to me and how helpful they've been to me over the years. And really, really proud to have served with them and even to Tammy, you know. I appreciate all the years that you've given to the city and I think it's been great. Lastly, the, the council, former council members that I've had the pleasure of working with and the current council, you know, we're not, we're not all like-minded. We have one common theme amongst us and that's what's the best thing to do for the city. You know, what can we do to best carry out what it is the city expects of us and what do they want? And we can disagree up here, and I guess the saying is you can disagree without being disagreeable and you can just accept the fact that you're gonna have differences of opinions, state your piece, and then when the decision is made, you move on to the next one. So I absolutely appreciate the, the thoughtfulness and the care and really the sacrifice that a lot of the council members make in order to, to serve this community and do it willingly and do it in a most honorable and way. So I, I really appreciate it. So that, thank you. Thanks again for everybody.
Thank you, Jeff.
Thanks, Jeff.
Okay. First of all, the Christmas on Main, I want to thank those who organized it. Robert had a lot to do with that and those who put out the time. Chief, great job. Public Works did a great job. Everybody chipped in and we got what we always get, is a good input for the community. It's what makes Escalon special to me. I mean, you see people come out, regardless of what they're thinking when they're not there, they're all thinking the same thing when they're there. And their idea is to celebrate our town and they did a great job. And I want to thank all those responsible for that, as well as Dominique and the rest of the staff. The other thing is City Manager, we're, we're sitting around here trying to figure out who our City Manager is and stuff. So I'd like this council to consider appointing someone or getting to moving on with it, but I think personally, I'm happy with what we have. And I want you to consider that as time goes on here, so we can move forward and get somebody in place so we can get over the process here. And we have the right to actually appoint. We don't have to go out for any sort of election or appoint.
For City Manager?
Yeah, right.
Right, yeah.
So I don't know how we move forward on that, Counselor, but it's something we want to address.
Put it on agenda.
Okay, let's do that for the next agenda.
Do you have a?
A consensus? I'll get one.
That's what you need?
Yes.
Yes?
Yes.
Yes?
Yes.
We got four yeses and one abstention. All right, so that's on the next agenda. We'll solve that issue. As far as the appointing and election, it's, it seems probably a lot of people have said, well, we weren't included. But you know what? It's like everything else in this town, we try to do. Once we do it, everybody goes, why weren't we informed? Why weren't we told? It's like everything else. There are avenues to find out information if you work hard enough to find them. And it's not that hard work, really. You need to make a phone call, call a council member. The information's out there if you're, if you're looking for it, okay? So again, I appreciate all those interested and I hope that we can pick somebody worthy of the job. But it's not something we're hiding. It's, it's about as transparent as it needs to be. So in the future, if you're interested in something in this community, don't be shy. Come to the city council, come to the city, call a council member, you'll get your information. There's no reason you shouldn't be without it, because it's available to everybody. And having said that, we're gonna close this meeting down and move into a closed session. And so we're gonna adjourn and come back later. There you go. Thank you for coming tonight.